Welcome to the Harpswell Select Board Meeting of Thursday, January 30th, 2025. If anybody wants from home to participate, you can go on the agenda for tonight and hit the rules for Zoom. In the meantime, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a couple additions to the agenda. How about?
The two items in front of you, if you want to take them up under other business.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
One is to authorize that the airboat be used at the Sebagal Lake Ice Fishing Derby, and the other is to extend a lease for a vehicle with Maine Health and Mid Coast Hospital.
Yep. I think we're good. Public comment? Nothing? Select Board announcements?
I just would like to work on the coming year codifying the right to fish into an ordinance rather than just a policy, and add right to farm to that. Got a year to work on it.
Yep. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I do want to publicly thank Rhonda Peak. Her last day of working for the Town of Harpswell was yesterday.
Oh, no.
And she's been with us for three years. She worked in our accounting department. She was an administrative clerk, and she did a wonderful job for us. So, we wish her all the best in her retirement. We are looking for a replacement for Rhonda. We're also looking for another code enforcement officer, and we are looking potentially for a deputy town clerk. So, if anyone is interested, or if you know someone who may be interested, check out our website, contact the town office, fill out an application. We'd be very interested in interviewing people who have an interest in working here. So, thank you.
Consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda, which is the minutes and the warrant.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Replacement holding tank application, map 19, lot 65, 59 Potts Point Road. Who's speaking to that? Me? Go ahead.
I'd be happy to. I thought I saw Margaret, but...
Somebody.
They did ask this to come before the Select Board. It's a replacement holding tank. The holding tank decovenant has been completed and recorded that limits the use of the structure to seasonal use and to no more than two bedrooms. The state of Maine requires holding tanks to be heavily monitored as they can be well abused, and so there's usually covenants that get put in there, and that's there, and it is a replacement. The code officer has approved it, and the Maine Subsurface Waste Water Disposal Rules requires it to come to the Select Board.
Looks like the lot's way too small for a septic system. Probably poor soils and everything. I move, we approve it.
Second.
No discussion? All in favor? All right. Wharf applications. Nope, not here. All right. The first one is John and Mary Engelhardt, 28 Harpswell Islands Road, map 50, lot 34.
I'm Diane Plourd, the applicant for John Engelhardt. We've been working on this for some time. We had a site visit, and on the site at First Road, John was there, his wife, a neighbor, and a butter, Redfish, who was doing the building, and myself. In the freezing cold, I might say. It was very cold. Redfish is here to speak of the wharf application, if you have any questions on that. Norman is here, if you need to have any questions.
This is a, this whole project is a pretty extensive project with shoreline stabilization involved in it because they've got some major erosion issues that were exacerbated with last winter storms. We believe Mike Weber Enterprises will be doing the riprapping and shoreline stabilization that's been designed by the customer and his son, and Redfish has done the design work for the structure itself, the wharf itself.
There's no building on this site, right? Just an empty lot?
Correct. It's got easements from another lot on the other side of First Road.
Straightforward, other than, other remediation that has to be done?
We've done a lot of remediation with DEP and Army Corps and Planning Board, and a lot, I mean, I think it's been a year and a half waiting for this to go through. So, John is ready to get this done because the ground is slowly making its way into the road.
When we originally started this process was before last year's storms. Those storms washed the banking back about another 10 feet, 10 or 15 feet, took down a couple of very large trees in the process, so.
Well, far be it from me to say no.
At this point, I move to approve the application. As the Harbor Master indicates, there's no hazard navigation, no injury to rights of others in relation to fishing, following, or navigating. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
All right. Robert Gurkink, 254 West Fendy's Point Road.
Been very busy. Robert Gurkink, we did go to Planning Board. As a matter of fact, I just got the decision in the mail today from the Planning Board. We did have a site visit last week with Tim Clark, Paul Morgan, and myself, and everything looked really good, another very cold day. I did not go down to the shoreline, but Paul and Tim did, so I am, Tim told, was saying everything looked fine. Everything was good.
Yep.
So, we do have the approval from the DEP and Army Corps. We just need, what happened with this one was, this is a replacement wharf and floating, but it was indicated to the code office and to the DEP as a new, that's why it's coming here. So, otherwise, it is a total replacement, and Paul Morgan will be the builder on that.
But it's been a year since the destruction, so.
Yes, absolutely. It has been a year.
There's one note in here from the Harbor Master that it's proposed wafting not negatively. In fact, commercial fishing, as long as it remains the same length as it was before it was destroyed.
It is.
Okay.
It is the same length, yes. And I did, I did send photographs to the Planning Board of aerial view and all, and there's like five lobster buoys in that area, far, far away from the, far away. So, it won't be a problem. But otherwise, everything else is approved.
Yep. All right. Look all right to you?
Yeah.
Both of you?
Yeah.
I move to approve the application. As the Harbor Master indicates, there's no hazard navigation, no injury to rights of others in relation to fishing, following, or navigating. I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right. Now, we got a request, New England Fisheries Stewartship Association.
Allison Hawks.
Gary Lehman.
George Prince.
We're all part of the NEFSAs board, and we are requesting an amount of money to our organization. For us, it makes sense for towns to partner with us. We've been on a great movement, I guess I would call it. We've been getting a lot of stuff done in the fisheries. We represent all fishing organizations, not just one. So, we've had a big voice and a big impact on a lot of things going on just recently, most recently, the gauge increase. I'm sure all of you have read something about that, but NEFSA had a big impact on that as well. We do a lot giving back into the communities. We do a lot of cleanups. We fed the homeless. So, we don't just fight for fishing, but we fight for our communities too because it affects that as well. I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, through our advocacy campaigns through NEFSA, I mean, we've even got funding appropriated through our fundraisers to give the University of Maine $25,000 for deeper water lobsterment settlement research, which in return gets us a better understanding of sustainability of fishing, which is kind of the thriving point of what? We grew up here in Harpswell, you know? We were raised to do these things. It's like a lot of the lobster gauge measure sizes here in the state of Maine, that, those management cycles were put in place by the stewardship of the fisheries, you know, for sustainability, for the long term, for the next generation. It's the same thing when we offer all youth license holders, anyone under the age of 18, free memberships with NEFSAs as well. I mean, this grassroots movement started here in the town, you know? We've expanded across the New England region into the mid-Atlantic. Now, we work on a lot of these national issues as well, but we like to keep everything state local, you know? We do a lot of educational pieces on sustainability practices of multiple fisheries as well. We've even offered here in town as well to set up educational pieces on certain backgrounds to best way the newcomers coming into our community as well could get a better understanding of what it is that we've been doing for generations, what we hope to keep doing for the future too.
Joyce doesn't want to talk.
I'm just here for moral support. Thanks, thank you for the consideration.
No sweat. I don't think you need any moral support, frankly, but nice try. But we're happy to take any questions. Yeah. No, I know what you guys do.
Can you go to the podium?
Mills Chan, Oars Island, and actually, thanks a lot for those comments because, actually, I came for the firehouse discussion and saw this. So, as I saw the grant proposal, it essentially includes the 2025 budget, but didn't really specify what the organization was intending to do in Harpswell. So, I found these comments very helpful. But that makes it hard to talk about the merits of the grant per se. The thing that concerned me is that when you look at the allocation of the expenditures in the budget, about 73% is going for overheads. That's 73% of the $840,000 or so, and only 27% on direct services. So, generally, if one looks at grants, you would expect to see higher efficiency in terms of the allocation to direct services versus overheads, and I think that's, that's a concern. There was a reference now to the Town of Harpswell supporting. I saw that the budget proposal also included a $100,000 line item of support coming from other towns, but there was no information on whether any other towns have actually come in. So, I also understood at least that the budget proposal wasn't reviewed by the Budget Committee, and so I guess my concern is that this, if this goes to town meeting, is there going to be more evaluation done of the grant, including a clear understanding of the services that would be provided through the town's grant? Any better explanation for the very high overhead costs and other information that would allow for a more informed review of the request? So, that's, I just wanted to highlight, I think those are concerns about the proposal and the way it's, and the way it's presented. Thanks.
I don't particularly have those questions. I know, I know what these folks do around New England and all down the East Coast, so those aren't concerns, am I?
I would, I would like to say something that I've become aware of NEFSAs in the last few years, and I believe it's a relatively young organization.
Yes, we're on our third year.
You're on your third year. And as I read the request, and as you said, I think, Jerry, that the request, the $5,000 you're asking for is miniscule. It's just a nominal amount, given your budget is $855,000. So, I see it as a request actually for the Select Board to endorse NEFSAs and the work you are doing. And my concern is that I do not know, I know people in the fishing community are well aware of it, but as a community as a whole, I don't know what the sentiment in the community is, is for that. And I think that the thing is, we need to, you're asking for an endorsement of the organization as a whole. Usually, we are asked to endorse, in the budget process, a project or a relationship and so on and so forth. So, those are my, those are my questions about it that is ambiguous to me as to whether an action of the board to endorse would be supported by the community.
Well, I'll put it like this. Swans Island appropriates their entire budget of $10,000 generally to the Maine Lobstermen's Association. We have been forefronting, I mean, the majority of our fisheries here in this town is lobstering. With the gauge increase, we've done the math on it, that was looking at a 10 to 15% reduction to our local fishermen. That's money straight out of the pockets of their families, which is something that we've been challenging on, not only as advocacy, but on the scientific level as well, which the benefits that we're bringing forward and bringing to the universities is not only impacting this town, but every coastal town in our New England region. And it's the same as, you know, our educational pieces are taking knowledgeable fishermen from all of our coastal regions and using, sharing that wealth, not only with our town, to sustainable fishing practices, but for the long term, for the generations of Harpswellians that are coming into our fishing outfits in the near future.
I don't think...
Sorry, can I just add something to that real quick, too? Is that, you know, Harpswell being built on fishing, and what a statement the three of you could make for our town to support fishing. And we've been here, you know, not just as this organization, but, you know, over the years relentlessly just asking that we get support from our selectmen in our town. And as you said, Jane, it is a very nominal amount in our budget. This is really just us coming to the town to say, Harpswell, you know, support your fishing community, and I don't think that it's asking too much of the town's budget. Thank you.
No. Anything else? No. Yeah? I, well, I move to approve the request to NEFSAs for the $5,000. Should've come earlier and asked for more, but.
It's next year.
Yep. Yep.
All right, I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Did you vote?
Yeah.
All right.
I did not vote. No, I did not vote.
She didn't vote.
No. You opposed, or?
Abstained.
Ambiguous, or?
I, I think, my feeling is not now.
Okay.
That's my, that's where I am.
You don't know enough?
I don't think the community knows enough, and I think there are other organizations that, for which this is, to my knowledge, has not happened, where we've been asked to endorse the organization per se, as opposed to...
You make, you make a good point there, yeah.
As opposed to supporting, in the case of the Lobster Association, their court case and so on and so forth. So, that's where I am.
Well, with my background historically, I have no choice, you know?
Your name is Johnson, after all.
Well, it stopped with my family, but nonetheless.
Yes, yeah, no. And it's not a lack of support to the fishing community at all. It's just about the particular thing we're being asked to do.
Yeah.
So, the town does have a policy. It's called Funding for Independent Not-for-Profit Organizations, and I'll read it. We, well, the staff would not have put this request in front of you had it not come forward, and we felt it was something you should consider. And it did come in late. It has not gone through the Budget Advisory Committee. But it says, "The town may be asked to provide financial assistance to certain not-for-profit local organizations that provide services to the town and its citizens. In deciding whether to provide such support, the following factors will be included in the consideration. One, a need for services has been identified. Services that duplicate or compete with existing services may not warrant consideration. Two, groups seeking town funding should demonstrate fiscal sustainability going forward before the town financial support is authorized." And it says, "Sustainability should not be based exclusively on town support. Three, organizations should have a corporate or other legal status or be affiliated with same to enable the town to deal with a legally accountable entity. Should such status be pending or revoked, or should the organization not be able to fulfill its mission, the town shall reconsider whether to recommend funding. And four, the town should consider both current and future implications before recommending funding." So, I just wanted to kind of state that for the record, and that was adopted in 2015 by the Select Board.
And, and I do have one question that I, that I neglected to ask. I know you're a nonprofit organization registered. Are you a 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(4)?
We are a 501(c)(6). Advocacy lobbying, that allows us, you know, to get towards state legislation a lot more to deal with, you know, in Augusta.
Your primary role is advocacy.
Yes, yes. I mean, we also have another, the NEF Association too, which is a (c)(3), the New England Fishermen's Foundation, that we don't really use because we're going to do a rollout with that probably in the next year or two with more scientific and educational purposes. But we do offer, you know, the entire spectrum across all fisheries. We don't segregate one fisheries to another. In our eyes, you're all equal. We're here to back you up with sound science.
All right, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. All set?
Did you actually, did you vote?
Yeah, we did. You're good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Draft work and report comparing costs and benefits constructing a central station.
Can everybody see the screen? We can tilt it if you can't see it from here. I'm Harvey Poe. I'm speaking for the working group. The question of building a central emergency services station is a big one. One thing at $6 million, which is a lot of, lot of money for a town like this. And in addition to the money, there's the consideration that we're talking about emergency services, which means we're talking about the lives and property of residents of Harpswell. So, we need to consider these things. The Select Board asked a working group to form, and the group is, consists of two members from each of the three fire and rescue departments. And we worked actually very, very effectively together so that everybody on the group contributed something to the collection of information that will be in the report. The Select Board chose seven questions that they wanted us to address, and that's what the report does. These on the sideboard over there, they're on the town website, if you want to see them. There was a long letter, you may have noticed, in the anchor today, asking a large number of questions, and I'm very pleased to say that every one of them is answered in the working group report, just a matter of going to that report. These two maps pull together a lot of what the working group found about the protecting lives and property aspect of this. The map on the left comes from the 2008 study that was done, and it shows the locations of the three stations, Harpswell Neck, Orson Bailey, Fendy's Harbor, and it shows the travel time from those stations to different points in the town. So, the green area is where responders can get to in five minutes. Orange areas take five to nine minutes, and if you're in the red area, it's going to take nine to 12 minutes for help to get to you. And you can see that in 2008, there were a lot of red areas, north part of Harpswell Neck, Great Island, Doughty Point. All of those areas were beyond rapid response.
Harvey, those are, if the stations are manned, correct? It's immediate response.
We're talking about travel time, so.
Right, so if the station is manned, then that's the response?
We're not, we're not talking about getting to the station now.
Yeah, correct, okay.
Right, no, this is travel time from the station. So, this was the situation in 2008. It's the situation now, with the only change being that there are two municipal firefighters who spend their 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM either at the Oars Island Station or at the Harpswell Neck Station, and respond all over the town from there. And it will be the situation in the future if we don't build a central station. These areas of town that are, are not effectively served by the locations of the current stations are the areas where growth is occurring. It's those are the areas where space has been available. There has been a lot of growth in Harpswell since 2008, and it's been primarily in the areas that are red. So, the lack of, of service to those areas becomes a more and more acute problem. It's not the municipal firefighters' fault, let me say. They, they do their best, but the distances are just too great for them to get rapidly to these distant areas. So, if you live up here, or here, or here, you're paying the same taxes to support the municipal firefighters, or you do if you live in one of the green areas, but you're not getting the same service. If we add the central emergency services building on Mountain Road, then it brings a great deal of the uncovered area into the five-minute, the green area. It takes a lot of Great Island, which originally was in the red area. At least it turns it orange. There's a little bit of the very northern part that still stays red. So, what we, what we are proposing, what the working group decided, is that the best solution to providing effective, timely emergency service all over the town is to build the central station. A second question that the board asked is, what effect would the central station have on insurance rates? You know probably that insurance companies like you to be within five miles of the nearest fire station. And basically, what you see here is that the red areas are further than five miles from the nearest fire station. If we build the central emergency services building, almost everywhere in Harpswell is going to be within five miles of the station. That counts not, not just and not so much in terms of the amount you pay for insurance, it also counts on how you can get insurance. Some companies will not write policies for properties that are more than five miles from the station, and others will limit the amount of coverage that they are willing to write. So, there is an second aspect to that, which I'm including because I can illustrate it with these maps. So, that, that is the capsule summary of what the working group decided.
Question, Jane? David?
We've heard this before.
Yes.
There, is it, are you finished?
I'm finished. Unless there are questions?
One of the questions that has been discussed before is the cost of this. People have been concerned about the cost. People have been concerned about the cost, and maybe you could speak to that a little bit. And we know from the workshop with the architect that estimating costs is very, very difficult.
It's difficult, yes. We have, so for the central station, we have as firm an estimate of cost as you can get, which is approximately $6 million. The alternative vision that was proposed by Orson Bailey Island envisions building a new station in Cundies Harbor, renovating the Harpswell Neck Station so that it can accommodate people, firefighters overnight, which it cannot do. The, Ben gave an estimate of the building the Cundies Harbor Station of $4,207,710, which he subsequently said he thought...
Add 30%.
Yeah, so, add 30% to that. We have some, some basis for estimating what it would cost to renovate the Harpswell Neck Station because we wanted to do it a few years ago, and we couldn't afford it, though we know, know how much we couldn't afford. That is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,400,000, some thousand dollars. So the construction costs for the two alternatives are essentially the same. The difference, and, and the really significant difference, comes in the staffing. The central station can be staffed with the current municipal firefighting group. There is, there is no need to add more people to that. So it can be staffed, the budget for 2025 is just about $350,000. Staffing three stations with two firefighters each is, is really expensive. The alternative vision came in two, two versions. The second version cut, costs back a little bit, but to, to do what they want to do would cost $1,200,000 in 2025, and of course, that would be an ongoing cost. Building is a, a cost, we pay it, and it's done. We have hired 20 firefighters, we have to keep paying them.
Thank you.
The, I have a kind of a crazy question. My pages five and six, which are the maps with the categories with 10 or more incidents.
Right.
The, I just, just wanted to understand that this, so this page five, for example, says there are 1,061 incidents, and those listed are the 730 there, so that means there must be 331 that didn't have less than 10.
There are, these data come from, from MEFRS, which is the main version of a national fire and rescue database system. They have more categories than you could imagine. So what we did to keep this down to, to something reasonable, we listed the categories that had 10 or more incidents. There, I, I could get you the list if, if anybody wanted it, but really, it goes on and on. So that, that's why we're, we're listing, showing only, what, 700 of the thousand?
730.
Yeah.
But there's two, smoke detector activations, unintentional, that's, that's in here twice.
Well...
Brush fires are in here twice.
This, this is peculiar. They, they have a category for brush, woodland, and trash fires, and they have another category for brush fires. I don't know what the difference is. Smoke detector malfunction versus unintentional activation of a smoke detector.
Like a kitchen frying pan.
Exactly. Somebody burned their toast. We get a lot of this. So that's, MEFRS is set up to, for data mining, but it is so fine-grained that I think it's really hard to effectively use the information.
Smoke alarms, I can tell you that, unless somebody knows differently, in the 50-something years I was on the department, there was, I don't know, several calls a week for fire alarms, and only one ever was an actual structure fire, and we lost the place. Yeah, yeah. So I don't know how much good these damn things do. We run around in circles chasing after them, but, so anyway, yeah.
We do. Carbon dioxide detectors, detected, carbon dioxide detectors, so if it chirping, that means the battery is in your place. And David goes out there very patiently and puts a new battery in.
I could tell you some bad battery, smoke alarm stories.
Yeah.
Not tonight.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Very well done.
Yep. People wanted this report, and they haven't. Any comments on it, Ben?
Now or public comment?
What's that?
Now or public comment?
Uh, we, we could speak to this right now.
Sure.
While we're on the subject.
Yep.
I'm Ben Wallace. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. I'm Ben Wallace. I'm the Fire Chief for Cundies Harbor, North Island, and co-chair of the Fire and Rescue Planning Committee. That sounds way too loud. Stand back here.
We can hear you.
I got a few comments about the report and a question, and I just want to say, if I come across as besmirching the report or anything like that, it's not my intent. It's just comments and a question. The first thing I'd like to clarify is the, the report is not the work product of the Fire and Rescue Planning Committee. I raise that because I've had a lot of people assume that it went through the regular committee process, and it did not go through the regular committee process, and it wasn't presented to the committee either. It specifically bypassed the committee. And I've been told by some of the folks on the work group that the work group disbanded before the final report was written. But again, it's not my intent to, you know, I think everybody on that work group, I think they gave it their all, I think they were sincere about it, and I, I'm not calling attention to what I would consider critical flaws or anything like that. I think the information is good. One of the questions I have is the last paragraph of the report calls out a problem with a paramedic building. And it specifically says, "The building housing the paramedics and fire car requires repair or replacement." Now, I'm aware that the building was inadequate when it was first built, but I'm not aware of something new. I don't know if there's a structural problem, I don't know if there's an old problem, but it makes me ask the question where the comment comes from.
I can't answer that because it struck me as well. I didn't know of anything that was immediate, you know, needs to be torn down or repaired or...
Yeah, I mean, it, it, so it struck me as a conclusory statement with, and I have no background or understanding or knowledge of what new is going on with the building. But that being said, again, I'm not trying to besmirch the report. We already addressed this when Harvey mentioned the cost of potentially building a Cundies Harbor Station. The last report, we got an updated number for the new Mountain Road Station at $550 a square feet. The number that I gave Harvey was based on an earlier estimate of $420 a square foot, so that's actually a 30% higher to go with that option.
It goes up by the day, by the way.
Well, yeah, and depending if, you know, how quickly you can get a contract signed on a new building, who knows with steel prices, right? It's going to affect either building fairly, but what I'm saying is the report reflects the increased cost in the Mountain Road building, but it did not reflect the increased cost similarly with the Cundies Harbor Station. So I wanted to point that out. So now, it might surprise you, you might think I'm in opposition to the building, but I want to be clear, I am full support of building the Mountain Road Station. I want to make that loud and clear. I've been doing my best to get that across to people now for a few weeks, but I think while this particular report is useful, it doesn't answer the questions that I've been hearing the last couple of weeks. I've had six meetings in the last two weeks with board members and responders and committee members where they've had a chance to ask questions. And I think, not that this report was intended to do that, I don't believe this report was intended to do this, but the most important thing somebody would want to ask, if you were asking them to spend $6 million, is what is a problem statement you're trying to solve? And I think, I think every one of us that's been living this for the last six years can answer that question, but we haven't articulated it for the public, and they're the ones that are going to vote on the project. And so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna share some questions that I've been getting, and I'm gonna share what I think the obvious answer is. It might be obvious to me, and you might disagree with me, but I'm just gonna share them, and hopefully I can get through it fairly quick, because I think it's important to answer these questions for people so that they don't have to come to the ballot box in ignorance. Because I've seen a lot of that on social media. People are making assumptions about this project without having good quality information. So I would, if I had to say what the problem statement is we're trying to solve, is that we're not seeing enough new people become volunteer firefighters to replace those that are aging out, moving away, or becoming inactive in Harpswell. This is a state and a nationwide problem, and Harpswell is not immune. We need folks to join and go to the Fire Academy every year, and for the first time in years, none of the three departments have anybody in the Fire Academy this year, and nobody in the pipeline. So we're aging out, we're moving away faster than we're replicating ourselves. So that's the problem statement, right? These maps are great, they're important, but the number one problem is, we don't have enough interior firefighters to keep going the way we're going and pretend like there's nothing wrong, right? That's our problem statement. To that, people will ask, so what have the departments done to try to address the recruitment intervention problem, right? That's the next question. And I would say to that a lot. I'm going to address this specifically with regards to Orson Bailey Island Fire Department only, but I know that we've all done it. When I started as chief at Orson Island, the department had one firefighter, one. That was not enough, and the town found out two years prior to that, when we had one firefighter go into a building, a fire building just down the street from the station, the town got fined because we didn't have the personnel that we needed. When I joined, recruitment was the first priority we had, and we started a serious rebuilding program. Initially, we were successful by getting the folks back that had been disillusioned and left the department previously. That had the added benefit of returning experience to the roster, and we were fortunate that folks that came back were not yet old enough to retire. This was almost 10 years ago now. In that way, we reinvigorated the ambulance, but it was just the beginning because we didn't get any experienced firefighters that way, and it took over a year to get any, it takes over a year to train a firefighter. That's just to be able to do the job while supervised, not independently. That's primarily because the Fire Academy is only offered once a year and requires six months of training, every Monday and Wednesday night and all-day Saturdays. The first group that we had that went through that was a bedrock that we rebuilt the apartment on, and many of those now are retirees. They weren't the young folks, they were the middle-class folks coming up in the next five to 10 years on retirement, and that's what keeps our departments operating. What have we learned when we try to recruit? Personal connections are essential. We are way more effective recruiting when we have a personal connection with the person we're talking to. We get a significant number of folks who volunteer to drive the ambulance, or operate the fire trucks, or help out in other ways, but most of our new recruits are not going to go to the Fire Academy. They just aren't. We've tried and continue to try online recruiting, recruiting booths at public events, road signs at the end of the road, like the end of Cundies Harbor Road, says, "What happens if nobody comes?" We've had some success with that, but not firefighters. We've gotten one firefighter out of that in two years. We've got a bunch of drivers, but not firefighters. We've been inventive tapping into non-traditional groups like Bowdoin College students. Orson Island has three students that already have their EMT licenses, one's already responding, two are going through the onboarding process, but this pool hasn't developed firefighter candidates either. We have one Brunswick resident on Orson Island's roster. They went to the Fire Academy in '24, and he's currently active. That's great, one firefighter. We have none this year. We explored SMCC's live-in firefighter student program, but we were declined due to demand by departments already in the program and because of the distance from the primary campus in South Portland. We explored that. We recognize our volunteers in various ways, such as a modest comp plan in line with IRS rules for volunteers, but we cannot significantly increase to that without running afoul of the volunteer status. We brought in outside consultants on several occasions from out of state. Many have suggestions that they brought us, that we've, we've implemented where we can, but a lot of them require legislative action at the state or municipal level and are outside of our ability to address. Building workforce, affordable housing is a municipal issue, right? Tax breaks for volunteers is a state issue, right? We, we can, to be frank, there's no way of knowing any of those would work in Harpswell, given our demographics, but they're outside of our ability to do anything other than testify at a hearing, right? How will a new building on the Mountain Road fix a personnel problem? I've heard that more times than I can count. We ought to have an answer to it, right? The answer is, because the volunteer nature of the fire departments and the reduced number and availability of new firefighters, there may or may not be enough firefighters available to respond from the station in your district to your emergency. No station is immune to this, and we rely on mutual aid from the other two departments when it happens. If the incident happens to be in the district where the paid firefighters are on duty, then you get a prompt initial response. If they're on duty but not in the same district, you still get the benefit of the truck rolling out the door faster, but it's outweighed by the increased travel time to get to the emergency because they're coming from the other side of town. So one, the new centrally-located emergency service facility will reduce times to the majority of calls simply because it is closer to all three districts than the stations and the other two districts. That's just the long and short of it. Two, to provide the same benefit based on the hours of operation without a centrally-located facility, more paid firefighters will be required, the same number of hours, more people. So saying we're going to do it three times, well, where are we going to get the firefighters? If you can't get the firefighters for one, you're not going to get the firefighters for three. It's just the way it is. How will the centrally, the central facility impact volunteer operations? I've heard this a lot, I've seen comments on, on social media about it. One of the comments I saw was, "Oh, great, so now we've got to go all the way to Mountain Road to get our fire truck." The volunteers will continue to operate from their own stations. They will continue to respond as they always have to the scene or the station, and on the same trucks they always have. The paid firefighters will continue to assist with recruitment and training initiatives for the volunteers, the same as they have just like FRAP. I can explain that some more, but I'm afraid I'm taking up too much time, what FRAP is. Only one fire truck's being transferred to the new station, which is the town-owned fire truck at Harpswell Neck, and they have already told us they can no longer afford, they are no longer able to staff two engines, so there's no, no downside. There's no change in dispatch or assignment of calls. The paid firefighters will continue to respond to fire calls to support the volunteers as they have since 2017, except for the new central station location. Will, will the facility be staffed 24/7? And right now, the answer is, current budget plan calls for staffing the new facility 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week, to cover volunteers when they're away from work, but the station is designed to accommodate 24 staffing, 24/7 staffing in the future. I've got some more, but just to wrap it up, the bottom line is, these are just some of the questions I've been getting asked, and they're some of the real basics. And while as important as this report is, it didn't ask, it didn't answer some of the most basic questions I've been hearing, and I think it's essential that we answer it so people can be informed when they go to the ballot box. If they don't know what the problem is that we're trying to solve, why are they going to spend $6 million? That's, that's all I've, I've taken up way too much time.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Ben.
Probably more important to hear it next Thursday, but it is what it is.
All right. Yeah, sure, why not? More to terror.
Actually, Ben, thank you. That was awesome. I had actually a couple of the questions that he answered on this. I had actually a couple of the questions that he answered on this. I'd also like to say. Yeah, I know where to find ya. I also want to say thank you to everybody that volunteers and is a part of this because it's, I've had to use the service more than once and family and it is important to us. My, I guess the only question I, and maybe you answered it and I didn't understand, so we build, if we want to build a new central station, we're still gonna have to take care of the other stations. This will be an additional cost. It's not getting rid of.
No.
So will we still have to renovate? Is that part of this plan too, or?
No, no.
But down the road, we're gonna have to do some renovating to the buildings?
Nope.
None?
Nope.
This will take care of?
There may be something coming down the road at Cundies Harbor in the future, who knows? But right now, there's no plan to do that.
Any renovations would have been to allow someone to spend the night there and, you know, have a full-time fireman on site.
And the central station takes care of that, so it doesn't have to, okay, got it.
Also EMS will, you know, the paramedics will move up into the new building also.
But the ambulance will still be?
Yeah.
And then, so I know he's one fire chief and I'm sorry, I don't know all the one.
The other ones over there.
And then all the fire chiefs are in agreement for the central station. That was one thing I didn't see in that, like, I love when it has a thing that says, well, whoever they are, the two of you are both in agreement that this is something that should happen. Cause it's, to me, it's, these are the experts and when they speak to something, then I would pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. I think we're good with this for the evening.
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone, we have a public hearing here on this issue, 4:00 PM next Thursday, and I think we would like to make sure that both fire chiefs are present and also Harvey, perhaps you want to do a brief summary of your report? I don't know, can think about that. But Port City Architect, the firm will be here and will provide its renderings of the building that it has designed conceptually and has allowed us to come to the determination of the cost. So that will be presented to people Thursday and again, it starts at four. It'll be here, it'll be streamed, so you don't necessarily have to come, you can watch it live streamed, but just wanted to mention that.
Could I just say one other thing, thinking about the public hearing, that very much appreciate what you added, Ben, tonight and that that information, we find a way to make that available to people. That they can hear a summary of it, that they have paper to take home or something like that, because particularly the beginning, what's the problem we're trying to solve is absolutely essential that people in the community understand how that, what that is and how this addresses it. Thank you.
I'm wondering, before we do the budget review, if we gotta get the rest of the business out of the way?
Sure.
It's all right with me. What do you think?
You have more comment?
Oh, you've got more comments.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Brownie Carson. I live on the neck and I'm 14 years of volunteer ambulance driver with Harpsell Neck Fire and Rescue. I think I may be the most senior ambulance driver on our side, not on the other side. I'm sure there's some people that are longer. Just a couple of comments that I think I'd like to share with you and that I think are very relevant. The first is that I know some concerns have been expressed about whether having the central station and, and still small, but professional firefighters would have an impact on volunteerism. The same concern was expressed when we went to the MC2 paramedic model. And I believe, and I think this is quite broadly shared, probably not universal, that in fact, having a paramedic ready and working with our EMTs and adding that extra knowledge and that extra experience has actually inspired, enthusiasm may not be the right word, but inspires confidence for all of us because we responders believe that our citizens are getting the best care as quickly as they possibly can. And the other comment I'd like to make actually occurred to me during a run that Michael DiLorenzo and Harvey and I did this morning at about 5:00 AM over on the neck. I live 200 yards from Harpsell Neck, the Chipman Station. Michael lives, what, four miles north? Harvey lives about the same distance north. So we're really close in the grand scheme of things. The call was just south, maybe 200 yards south on Harpsell Neck Road. And as quickly as we got to the station, and Michael and I were joking, we were both awake, I don't know whether you were or not, Harvey, I wouldn't ask you this question at 5:00 AM. So we got up, got to the station really quickly and MC2 coming, the paramedic coming from the central station, still got to the house south of the Irving Chipman Station a little bit faster, maybe not more than three minutes or so faster, but as has been pointed out in the report, minutes are hugely important in the fire situation and if you have a stroke or a heart attack or something like that, minutes are also really important in the rescue situation. So the, the model, and this may not be, I mean, I would defer to Ben and David and others with much, much more experience, but the model here of having built the, the barn for the, for the paramedic wagon and having them quickly respond with all kinds of great skill and having the volunteers back them up as quickly as we possibly can, has, I think, served the town really well and it seems to be a model that is applicable, not apples and apples, but certainly, certainly applicable as we assess going with the central fire stations, supported by and supplemented by the volunteers and it just, you can make statistics and, and, you know, other kind of data do almost anything you want it to. I think the experience that the town has had, and certainly my personal experience is this is, this has served us well and so as I look at this, at this proposal and, and the model, I think it's a really good one based upon our experience. So thank you for letting me share that.
Eric, thanks. All right. We good to go now? All right. We'll start with Thayer Corporation contract, contract extension.
Yeah, the project is essentially complete. However, the contract we had with Thayer indicated that they would complete the project at the end of 2024. That didn't quite happen. So we're just asking that this board authorize the chair to sign a document that extends the, the term of the contract and therefore our warranty on parts, equipment and labor would start as of the final completion date.
I'll make this easy, so move.
Second.
Does that mean Tim's coming back?
I think it's essentially done now.
No, I didn't miss that guy.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Mary Meeting Shellfish Company lease.
So the town leases a lot in the marine business district at Mitchell Field to a company called Mary Meeting Shellfish. In our lease agreement, Mary Meeting Shellfish is required to install a well and a septic system and they were supposed to do that within one year of operation. They need some additional time to do that, so we're asking this board to authorize a lease amendment that would give them an additional six months to make that happen. And during the six-month period, we, the town, will be working with Steve Leveque, assuming the board is okay with that, we, the staff, and it could be a member of the board if one of you would like, to negotiate the lease rates for the additional acreage that Mary Meeting Shellfish is interested in. So currently, they lease Lot A. There is Lot B, which is a couple of acres. They want to know what the town is going to charge for the entire lot before they make a decision about whether or not they want to lease the entire lot or a portion of Lot B.
They need to lease some of that for septic system.
They need to, right, but they're still considering the entire lot depending upon the lease rate of the town.
Hammer that out.
So we need to work on those issues as well during this period. And again, we would ask that you authorize the, the chair to sign that type of extension.
So moved.
No conversation, all in favor? All right. Set a public hearing for March 8th ballot regarding Curtis Memorial appropriation.
This is a good time to remind our voters that on March 8th, all of the warrant articles except for people running for elected office or the ballot question regarding Curtis, everything else is gonna be voted on the floor, even if the, the central station, the, the select board has not made a final decision about whether or not that goes to the March Town Meeting, but if it does, it would not be by secret ballot, it would be discussed on the floor and voted on the floor. Curtis Library is on the ballot. We needed to provide the town clerk with our ballot article 60 days in advance of March 8th and we weren't ready to send other types of ballot questions at that time or this board wasn't ready. So this one requires a public hearing, you won't be able to discuss it at the town meeting and the staff is recommending that you set that public hearing for Thursday, February 13th at 6:30 here in the meeting room.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Head nod do it?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
All right. We'll skip public comment till after budget review, but we'll, we'll go to the quest for the airboat at Sebago Lake, which we do every year.
Right, we'd like to get this on record that we've been asked by the sheriff's department if the town could have its marine wardens operate the town of Harpsell's airboat at the Sebago Lake Ice Fishing Derby on February 15th and 16th in 2025. It's typically kind of used as both a training session for our marine wardens and it's also available to help in various situations that might arise.
Mutual aid training, mutual aid.
So we want to get on record that this board authorizes the use of the town's airboat at that event.
So moved.
All in favor?
Thank you. And then one other item, the town currently leases one of the paramedic vehicles, well, actually, it's one of the vehicles that our law enforcement folks used in Harpswell. So through a contract with Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, we received this vehicle back. One of the Midcoast Hospital intercept vehicles got in an accident and they asked the town to lease our vehicle to them. That lease ends at the end of this month and they have asked for an extension of that lease until September 30th of 2025 and they will return the vehicle to the town of Harpswell. And then we will decide if we're going to keep it or sell it at that point.
After they run it into the ground?
Well, it's being used for a good purpose.
All right, I saw moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. And at this point, we'll slide into the budget review.
Okay, so I asked Jim Babarski, who's our, our tech person, to put on the screen the capital portion of the proposed 2025 budget. I don't know if that's large enough or maybe if it can be enlarged for people. But at last week's meeting, the select board covered most of the operational budget and we have left the capital budget for discussion tonight. The first area you actually talked about last week was debt service. And that is repaying our obligations for loans that the town voters have already approved. That would be taking down the pier at Mitchell Field, some road projects. And so in 2025, that debt service figure is $515,000 and we are asking the voters to appropriate that amount. In addition, as part of our capital planning process, and we believe it's a good process, we set aside money over time to build our capital reserves for various projects. And so some of the examples of those reserves would be, we have a capital reserve account for roads and we tend to add to that capital reserve every year. We build up to do certain road projects, but there are times when we have to bond money if we have some significant projects coming down the road. We also have an emergency vehicles reserve account where we, the town, provide the funding for all of the emergency vehicles that are used by the three volunteer departments and by our, our municipal folks as well. So I, I just want to quickly kind of run through the appropriations for 2025. We're asking the voters to pro, to appropriate an additional $60,000 for our land acquisition and improvement account. It currently has $42,000 and it would bring it up to about a $100,000 level. There is one commitment there for $5,000 for the old townhouse. I believe it was the harbor and waterfront committee, but perhaps it was the town lands committee that said the town should have sort of this $100,000 level, should there be some acquisition that we might be, you know, interested in.
Jump on it.
But I would say when this reserve was set up for land acquisition or certain town improvements, any use of that money requires voter approval, any use of those funds. So the select board does not have the authority to expend any of that $100,000 if that's what we get to without having voter approval.
But the voters can't prove, approve it if it's not there.
Right. Or you can't take it back to them and ask them to approve it if it's not there. Then we have town office facilities, primarily issues associated with this office and that's where we funded our HVAC project and that one came in at about $400 and something thousand dollars and we still have a little bit left to pay on that contract because it wasn't completely done by 12/31/24. But you can see there's about 60-something thousand in the existing reserve and we're proposing to put about 75,000 in there. One of the projects we'd like to consider is our town office walkways need some, some improvement. We've received some complaints, particularly the entrance and exit to this meeting room.
Thank you.
So we think that those improvements need to be made and potentially we could do some building efficiency projects as well with some of that money if we wanted to save the resiliency and sustainability reserve for some other projects. Next, vehicle equipment reserve, that account, which we're proposing to put 60,000 in, is used to purchase vehicles for either general law enforcement or marine services in our contracts with Cumberland County and that would take that reserve up to about 152,000, should the voters approve putting that money in. We have a reserve for the recycling center and transfer station. It currently has about $730,000 in it. We're proposing to put in another 200,000, bringing it up to about 936,000. Phase two of the recycling center rehabilitation project involves the building and we have a, kind of an estimated cost of about 800,000 and there are some additional options the town could consider. So we're proposing that amount for 2025 to give the town some flexibility with that project. We have a boat and motor replacement account. We're building up to potentially purchase either a new boat or motor at some point. There's 15,000 in there, we're proposing to add another five, takes it up to about 20,000. We have an office equipment reserve account, has about 27,000, we're proposing to put 5,000 into that. We may be looking at purchasing a new central copier and phone system potentially. And then we have our emergency services vehicle account, currently has $381,000 in it, we're proposing to put 200,000 in there and Cundies Harbor, I believe, is working on some specs for replacing squad, is that five? Yeah. And then we move to emergency services equipment. This is in the area of our, primarily our communications equipment. We just spent a lot of money setting up a new emergency communications network off the Three Towers in Harpswell and we actually are investigating some of the gaps that continue to exist, particularly in the Cundies Harbor area. So we may need to purchase some equipment potentially for a location in that area to improve some of the, the gaps there. We are using some ARPA money for that. The ARPA money needs to be spent before the end. We are using some ARPA money for that, the ARPA money needs to be spent before the end of 2026. And then, we move to the Potts Point Pier. We are proposing that there be a warrant article that would authorize $150,000 from the town's fund balance, $100,000 essentially from insurance reserves, or, or insurance proceeds, I should say, to replace the town dock at Potts Point. We are waiting for the design. We have hired Tim Forrester to do a pro, to kind of develop a design for the town that both replaces what we had at Potts Point and also a cost estimate for making it more resilient. We have been talking to FEMA about this project, and we believe that we could get reimbursed for what was not covered under our insurance policy, our deductible, we got a $15,000 deductible, and we believe that they also may reimburse us for making it more resilient. So, these are ongoing conversations. It's hard to get a 100% commitment from FEMA, but we're following the process and the procedure, and we think that that is definitely a possibility. And then, we move to capital roads. We're recommending the town consider appropriating $400,000 in 2025. That also, we use $200,000 from fund balance, and that has to be approved by the voters. We would add that to our existing reserve, which is just under $600,000, bringing us to almost 1.2 million. We plan to do Peabody Road in 2025 and to fix Little Island and Ocean Street, both roads that were damaged in the January 2024 storms. Again, we're working with FEMA on possible reimbursements related to Little Island Road and Ocean Street. And then, we have the dry hydrant replacement reserve, which the town likes to keep at about, is it usually $15,000 range? We want to have money so that we can replace any of the dry hydrants in Harpswell that are used by the volunteer departments, and we rely on the departments and the municipal firefighters to test those dry hydrants and to let us know what needs to be sort of, what maintenance issues there are and whether or not we have reached the point where one might need to be replaced. And then, the last piece is the town, a couple of years ago, established a capital reserve for resiliency and sustainability, and we are being asked to appropriate $24,000 for that. It would bring the reserve to about $132,000, but we have a lot of different projects that are potentially going to be funded from that. We have a couple of grants regarding road projects, mostly planning, primarily planning. We have asked the select board, and they have agreed, to fund the person who's designing the town dock to make it more resilient, that's coming out of that fund. We could do some energy improvements to this town office building, and I think there is some other project I may be forgetting, and Marian Nave, I, I don't know, I'm feeling, oh, oh, I know what one is, is some, the, the Energy and Technology Committee would like the town to have a solar consultant to advise the town on what we're currently doing, which is, we are a subscriber to a solar farm in Southern Maine, and the Budget Committee thought we should have somebody come in and look at, you know, how that's working for us, is that the best way to go about kind of supporting solar energy, or should we think about our own projects? And if we think about our own projects, what should we do with the new roof at the recycling building? Does that have some potential for solar? So, we feel like we need to bring in someone with some expertise to help us in that area, and I think that's something that both energy and technology, resiliency and sustainability, and even the Budget Committee agreed upon. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell. In terms of the appropriations at Town Meeting, we're talking about, about 1.5 million, we're looking at using approximately $350,000 from fund balance. The other funds already exist, and as do the current reserve funds. So, you, you get a sense of, you know, the $4.2 million involved in these various projects. And if people are wondering, we do have specific capital plans for roads that lay out which roads we intend to do at what point in time. Those considerations are starting to take on, you know, more importance in terms of resiliency matters, and so, we're taking a look at that. And we also have a long-term plan for the replacement of the emergency vehicles, which is quite expensive over time. The cost of those vehicles has been escalating the last few years, but we, we do plan over time for these things. So, I just wanted to make that point tonight. Any questions on?
Well, this brings up the question, recently, the president decided he was going to stop all federal payments, would that have, I mean, that stopped it, but would that have affected us, some of the grants and things that we've gotten and applied for and?
Of different state?
I, I think most of our, some of the grants we received upfront, is that right?
That's all set.
And ARPA, we received upfront, because there was a question about whether or not there would be a clawback of that money, but I believe if, if we've already obligated it, which Harpswell has, we haven't spent it all, but we've obligated it by contract or agreement, I, I don't think that can be pulled out of the mix. I do think this question that came up recently about whether or not there would be grant funds for the central station, I, I think that's potentially impacted.
Yep.
And, oh, the, but the FEMA money, is that what you're talking about, FEMA reimbursement?
Sure, anything.
I guess, you know, I don't have an answer to those questions, to be honest with you. I can't take, take on trying to explain where that is at, quite honestly.
And who knows?
So, I think that is why it is important. Harpsell has a healthy fund balance, we're able to use it for projects, given authorization by the voters, and we anticipate some reimbursement, but I can't say exactly how much or when that might happen. We have submitted some requests to FEMA for some of the fixes that happened in 2024 as a result of the storms. They were more minor, they were things like fixing the platform out here on the cliff trail, and I don't know if you can think of some of the other?
Couple of town landing sites.
Couple of town, but we submitted those requests last year. We, we just have no idea when we're going to get that funding. Now, I will say, they don't give you 100%, but they give you like, I believe, either 85 or 90%, and then, the state gives us five or 10, and then, the town has to put some in. So, it's, it's not 100% reimbursement, but it's substantial.
I still think there's a lot of uncertainty out there, federal money.
Yes, I would agree with you on that. So, that's where we're at with the capital portion of the proposed 2025 budget. Last week, when the select board started the review, we had had a 5 o'clock workshop, and we had discussed some salary adjustments. So, the administration put those adjustments in, and I think next week, we'll, we'll show you the more complete budget, but it's, as of last week's discussions, implementing those adjustments, we're at $7.783 million, about a 5.8% increase. However, there are a couple items we still would like to discuss with the board, and we did raise this at the workshop, we would like the town to consider doing a salary survey.
Right.
And I think that seemed to be agreeable to the board, and we're proposing that we would put $20,000 in the budget for that. The other item is, we looked at our health insurance costs and our, our plans and how many people were taking health insurance, and we think we need to add another $15,000 to that number.
Wow.
So, again, this is in the operations area.
Right.
The old townhouse, I think I had mentioned how we received an estimate for cleaning the stones, manually cleaning the very old historic stones in that cemetery, and that's, that's about a $20,000 cost potentially, but we already have $10,000 set aside, so I think we're going to need to add another 10. And then, MMA this week told us that our dues would be about $200 more than what we initially thought. So, that's very minor, but we would like to work those operational changes in if there's consensus from the board, and we would present to you, and I guess tonight, you decided to include NEFSA in the proposed 2025 budget, so we'd like to work all of these numbers in and, and bring it to the board next week. In addition, I think you will see the first draft of the warrant for the annual Town Meeting, so we'll be looking for your input and feedback on how it's organized. I mean, we're going to follow a traditional approach, but obviously, we'd like to take your input on that.
This latest MMA magazine was all about cemeteries, did you see that?
I did, I haven't read the entire article yet. Oh, Terry just reminded me that in our review, we never discussed Mitchell Field.
Right, and that came after capital, so you have $9,400.
It opened waiting for you.
Yep, we got it right here.
Oh, I didn't give that to Jim ahead of time to put out, but the proposed 2025 budget is $39,200. Some of the increase has to do with the repair and maintenance area, and we, you know, are, we have some money in there in case we want to do possible soil and water testing at Mitchell Field in any areas. I wondered if you had any specific?
Under contracted services, is that to hire a Don Miskel replacement?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No.
We might have to think about that, you know?
Yes, that has come up in, at least the Town Lands Committee, that Don is providing services, not just at Mitchell Field, but?
All over.
Other sites, and since we lost the person who dealt with the dog waste?
Dog pots.
That's been included as well.
Okay.
Now, that $5,000 under contracted services is for the water and soil testing if we want to undertake this.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I could have been more clear about that.
You know, PSAP.
Repair and maintenance, I, I think they would like to do some?
PFAS.
Work on the generator building, kind of fixing up a few things, the century building, but I, I'm not sure where the board is on all of that at the moment. Doing some work on the invasive species at Mitchell Field, improving some drainage problems, improving the path to the beach, that type of thing. Then, we have portable toilets we're paying for, some money for signage, there's some money for the community, or the bandstand, kind of maintenance of the bandstand, and then, there is a very small amount, kind of nominal, for the monitor or the steward at Mitchell Field. So, that, that budget would be, would be worked in.
Yep.
I mean, it's part of the, the number you looked at last week, but we just didn't discuss it.
That's right.
So, I think we've now gone through all of the subsections of the 2025 budget. It is posted on our website, it was posted with tonight's meeting, but we will make a few updates based on?
So, the final number next week?
Yes. Now, that, yeah, okay, we'll leave it at that.
Yes, I think there, we, we have outstanding, Mitchell Field, the recommendation of the committee concerning the admin building.
The admin building is not?
Has not been determined yet, so that's like a $200,000, I think, estimate for that.
All right, you good with this for now?
Thank you.
All right.
If you're good with that.
Yeah, I trust you two. Public comment? No public comment, in that case, we're adjourned.